Glad to call this meeting of the Wausau Town Council Board. Would please send an invitation to Ted Thorn of the Church of Praise Church. Is that Clayton Riven now he is? We're so glad that you're here tonight. For those of you who don't know, he succeeded Brother Ricky Love, the former pastor, and he and his wife now are co-pastors. And I believe she's going to come next month for the invitation.
It's probably going to be in May.
May or year, okay. I'm glad that you're here if you would offer our invitation.
Sure, that's fine. Lord, we just come before you. God, first of all, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for the freedoms that we get to enjoy in this country. Lord, freedom, first of all, to worship you. God, freedom to be able to govern ourselves. And now, Lord, I just thank you for the willingness of those here tonight, Lord, to, first of all, ask for your wisdom and guidance in their meeting tonight. So, Lord, I pray that you would grant that to them. Lord, I pray that you would lead them and guide them and direct them, Lord, in decisions that they make, Lord, for the citizens of this city. And, Lord, we just thank you, God, for your grace. We thank you for your mercy. Lord, we thank you most of all for your son, Jesus Christ. And it's through him that we pray tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please, Lord, for the pledge, salute, and pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brother Ted. I hope everyone is well. We had a hospital visit this afternoon. And we have so many hospital visits right now you go. And we don't know what's wrong yet. This brother from our church has got to have a biopsy and there's 30 biopsies in front of him kind of thing. But we're glad that we've got you here. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes and the agenda? Okay, the chair would entertain a motion that we approve the agenda and adopt the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Okay, got a motion or a second? Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? How you with Mr. Carter?
Yes, Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us quickly down to the board.
Our engineer, Cliff Nowitzki, is supposed to be here, but if he gets your real addresses, it'll be him then.
Okay, does everyone have your microphone on? If we do?
It's not picking up.
Huh?
It's not picking up.
Probably turned it up over here. I hear.
Yeah, I hear.
There, I can hear. When you hold it up, Gmail.
We have headphones in there.
We may need to do that. I've seen some councils, I've seen some councils that do that.
We have headphones in there.
We can take some coat hangers and make some of those things. Okay, please, please go ahead and...
We have last, at the last month's meeting, we had the rural water people here. And they went over their feasibility plan, financial and asset management and all that. And we would adopt the resolution tonight, resolution 2022-007, a resolution to the town of Wausau, Florida, approving the town of Wausau utility asset management plan and physical sustainability plan, authorizing the town for to take all the actions necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and provide for effective data.
Okay, have you had a chance to read it? Or is there any questions or discussion on the resolution or on the plan that it addresses? The water loss portion of it, the financial portion of page nine, I think it is. We were also, we're also, water loss is one of those things that our audit are always talking about.
It looks like it's going to be dead on this week.
Okay.
As what we indicated.
Does anything on this plan want to help that? I didn't?
We will add another amendment to this resolution later on when our audit gets to rural water. They were looking at this audit. They have what we gave them, but they need to audit to complete the financial part of the water loss portion of it.
Is this the same thing that has to do with the fire records and all that stuff?
Yes, yes.
That they don't have to talk about?
Yeah, that's, and this will authorize the town to start those.
So that all that can get done?
Done, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have a question about the, about the plan or about the ordinance that we, or the resolution that we need to adopt to implement the plan? Okay, the chair would entertain a motion to, whatever your pleasure is, adopt the resolution.
I'm, go ahead, sir.
I make a motion to adopt it.
Okay, we have a motion or a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson, have a second? Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? How you with Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson? Yes, the chair, she is.
Okay, you have in your package a request from one of our attorneys for assistance with her water bill. Her bill, the total bill is $1,043.19. And she has been paid, she pays $100. As you can see on this, the last 12 months, she pays $100 every month. And she's not had anything, you know, been behind. She usually has a little credit, but she had a terrible leak back in this area. She's paid some of it down, as you can see, but, you know, she's, she does need some assistance with that bill.
The, the, the leak is since the first of this year?
Uh, yes.
I think that I thought from the letter that it's coming out.
Uh, she's had, yeah, some before and some, you know, then, you know, you can see that you...
This is the last time she had a credit?
Yes, uh-huh, and 21, you know, then she had paid. But it started going up then. And in June, she had 37,410 gallons. She got that leak fixed, and then she had 23,536,404,143,53. And then she got that one fixed, and it went back down. And then she had this one last month. It's $255.73. It's been, it's been an ongoing problem. It's an older mobile home. But I feel, whatever y'all think is...
So her bill is around $50 a month? That's the, that's the average bill for most folks, I think?
Yeah, hers is around 60 to 65 a month. And she pays, yeah, sometimes up to 70. She's going to have these grants that she does there.
So paying the hundreds, she's staying current?
She's staying a little bit.
But she's only working on the other $30 or $40 a time?
In the amount, yes. And that is all she says she can afford.
And how many, how many months would it take to pay off that?
It'd have to take a long time.
$30 or $40 a month? Okay, well, just the pleasure of the council. What, we, we, and we need to do this because some of you, maybe Judy and I, for the uncles, that the council hashboard come down on you pretty hard, I think.
Always.
Not to, not to make independent decisions. That it was not your place to forgive water bills or extend them or make payment plans and all that. So it does come before us. I'm always concerned about set precedences. And maybe we've already set precedences by doing some averages and some things like that, so...
Yeah, the only other one we've done is, was for Tasha Smith. And we took the last six months of her bill and averaged it and gave her a one-time credit for, or gave her a one-time bill for that.
And Tasha Hamlin, was that someone we?
That was paying the $3,000 bill.
Yeah. We get, we averaged and gave her a bill?
A bill for...
And then was that bill to be paid? Or was it to be paid off and then started?
No, she paid, she paid, she paid that one.
Paid that? What was she asking for? For, to give relief?
Yeah, give relief.
Turn it back to zero?
No, not put it back to zero. We can't, we can take, we can take that 593 and that 255 and average it down to probably, I would say, average it down to $70 for each of those. Plus her garbage, it'd be about a $90 water bill, you know? Because the rest, I'm like 59, 23, 59, 99, 68, 57, you know?
She owes $1,043. So, so...
But these are normal bills here. I, you know, I don't see a suggestion in any of those. Just this one is down a line here and this one is down a line here.
If we do six months, that's four months there. If we do, if we do six, but you got, you got three of those, I mean, three of those, two of those months are regular, normal bills.
Uh-huh.
So you don't have to leave that out. So that just gives us two to average. Unless we go back down to some of these larger bills that, that has had to accumulate that total.
Yes.
So you're saying we could take these two and then the next four?
Yeah.
Or go back?
Yeah.
I wonder if I need to read this thing? Where's the charge?
Not only what she pays, is somewhere between $76 and $80 a month. You know, sometimes it's down to 65, 68. You know, it's the corner of what she's doing there. But most of the time, you know, it's, it's an average bill between $65 and $70 a month. But if we could reduce the, the two-month one to 70 and then this one to 70, and then she would be responsible for the rest of it. This to 77. Somewhere like that.
So, so that's $140 plus 59 plus...
Yeah, she's still going to have her bill.
That's 200.
But you could get that called up pretty quick.
You're leaving $265 if you take that. So we're exchanging, we're exchanging $1,043 for $260 if it's paid off at one time.
But that's all, that would be about the amount we average it out for the...
You did talk to one of my creditors and see if I could...
I know they won't do that, you know?
A deal like that. Okay, what's the pleasure of the council? And, and the reason we can't go back further than that is because these are, some of them are recent, back in the last year. And if she pays on it, some of that was going down, going down. So we don't have a figure there for what we still be on down. Okay, what is the pleasure of the council, Lord? What's, what's the discussion we did?
Well, I kind of don't like it myself on that. I mean, I just don't. I know you, you know, I think I got it big as far as anybody, maybe not. But I still don't like that. I think it should be get where we pay our electrical bills and we pay that, we have to, it's a long, they cut off. And I believe that's going to answer that we got to solve some of these problems. I may be wrong, that's my feel on that.
Before we go into further, before you even get a motion, I need to declare that I won't be able to vote on this. Ms. Williams is my niece, and I won't, I won't be able to vote on this. So I can join the discussion, but I need to refuse myself from the vote.
Have we reduced, have we reduced bills for other people in the past?
Yes, yeah, we do.
That's a big loss.
We do, yes.
And she's on a disability reserve?
I'm saying she's on disability.
She's on a disability. And I don't know what her husband's income is. She has recently married. But I don't know what anybody's income. I think, well, it says here she's on a social security disability.
Well, a lot of them are all about as much as people on, on, just social security, you know? I mean...
It starts out low.
Yeah, well, that's right, you know, it's... But anyway, I don't like it.
Well, we reduced bills before for people in the past.
Yeah.
You're going to have to do it for her too.
Well, that's something we need to stop. I mean, we can't go back to the past. We have to, if you're going to stop that, you have to do it, make a decision to do it and stick with it, I mean.
When's the last time that we done one of her?
Oh, it's been several months, yeah.
So it's been within this year?
Tasha will, and she's back on this, I'm saying.
Oh, she's still in, yeah.
I mean, if she needs some water, I told her some water to the house, but I don't think that's going to be the answer to it, I mean.
Is this the first time that she has asked?
This is the first time.
She's never asked for help?
And she's ever been behind us. At once she, she was behind one time before, she got called up and, you know, she...
So she does have a record to catch me to?
Yeah, she does, yeah.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to watch y'all's luck.
And I'll take that's to her credit. It shows that she, in this just discussion, take, say, seven out there, that she, that she does and usually has a, usually has a credit. Now, part of her, part of her letter, when you got the kind of leak that generates this kind of bill, there's somebody somewhere that could have helped. And that one, now, I don't know what her children and grandchildren situation is there. But, but I tell you, I didn't know that there was a leak over there. And I don't know some of our churches, how people would help and something like that. And I can only imagine just how embarrassing it might be to have to be in a position to ask for it.
Yeah.
And finally, our, our maintenance staff just went and fixed it for her. She couldn't get nobody. I think her dad's been several surgeries near death. Covid, the whole family's had Covid multiple times. They just keep spreading it back forth to each other.
At, at one time, yeah, they, at one time, we did not know that her dad was going to make it or not. They had him on three days straight dialysis, and his kidneys went to 10% of working or, however you measured that. And he's doing better, and he is at home, but...
And he comes soon, though.
But we have a request for the sake of time. What do we need to do?
I think we should help her this time, since we have those people.
This time?
It's a one-time.
It's a one-time thing?
One-time thing.
Should be, and anybody else that we ever help, they should know it's a one-time because when that bill comes through and Morgan sends that bill out, she says you have a leak. She puts a note on it. And once you're, once you're warned and you continue, that's the time to make contact with us.
Right.
That's the time to let us know upfront. This is my situation. I don't have resources, I don't have family, I don't have... Upfront, not when you're six months, you're behind.
How many months is this? All these are here?
That's what she's paid every month. That's just a payment history there.
Oh, okay.
She's, she hasn't been on our list in months, but our ears, our elections, it is.
Is that a motion, Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. Motion to help her.
Do we have a motion for a one-time help by, what, averaging the bills like Morgan?
Like, like...
That presentation?
Right.
We have a motion to assist on a one-time basis. Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, since they put a one-time in our occasion.
Yes, sure.
We need to keep up with that.
Wilson?
Yes.
Yes, okay, the chair stands. And, and maybe, you know, we may have, I think we agree with what you're saying, that, that we all need to take care of our things. But maybe we need to put a policy in, or maybe in one of our newsletters that you may say something to, that says, first of all, first of all, we need everybody to pay it all, and then... Well, I think if you make it, if you, if you advertise it, then we want to be a lot of one-time.
Yes, we are, we are.
Maybe we ought to let them call it a...
We just put it in the minutes, it was a case by case.
We just don't have a, what kind of situation that we want to come up with as far as family or jobs or anything else, you know?
We can just, like, case by case, I think.
Every situation's different.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. ...
All right, tree quotes, only pecan tree we discussed last month. I have three companies that have, give us a quote. All-American Disaster Relief is saying $7,200. That ain't good, but it's, she told me it was $7,200. I don't know.
I see, you said one, what?
That's 48, that's the wrong one. Never mind, I hope you do another one. But it's $7,200 to cut and, and take down if they want it.
All right, I don't see that, but if you go...
I got proof of that, yes.
All right.
We have James &amp; Sons Tree Service. They will take it down, grind the stump, and the oak tree down and grind the stump for $4,650. They done the ones in Ms. Ruthie's yard there, and they done some in Judy's nephew's yard. They've done an excellent job. Then we have Travis Griffin. Pecan and oak tree removal and haul off, $6,800.
So there's quite a bit of bill for some of them. Two thousand dollars.
Two trees, two trees.
Okay. Okay, we have quotes for $7,200, $6,800, and $4,650. What's the pleasure of the council?
I think we ought to go with the cheapest bill. Just taking down the two trees. Say it's the two trees there.
And they're in our alley.
They're, they're city trees.
Oh, yeah, we should have done that alleyway. Why didn't you ask us two years ago? I think it's been, this tree is up really, was up really partially in Michael, and it's just continued to...
And this is the, does that, does that mention, are we grinding the stump?
They're grinding the stump.
Okay. Did you make a motion?
No.
No, who did? Judy did.
Judy.
Judy, Judy, okay. Okay, we have a motion that we accept James &amp; Sons' quote for $4,650, $4,650. Are you second in the motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? How you with Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
The chair, she is.
All right.
Maybe we can give away next week.
We, you have in your package, I have two applications for our Recreation Director. And you know both that Steve and Brandon have, the only one could put in an application.
Okay, who do we want to talk to first?
Either one.
I found, I noticed, you know, I haven't looked at it.
I don't know if I looked at them.
I want to talk to Brandon first because in courtesy, he is currently serving in the role and has entered, and that's called him first. Brandon?
Hello?
Thank you for the job that you have. Thank you for getting us through this season on almost no notice at all and our need to move quickly. Thank you for that. Now, now tell us, tell us what we should keep you and tell us what you would do for us.
Well, so, um... So I kind of have a bit of the same stance I had on it last time that we met, is that I don't, I don't intend on turning this into a Brandon versus Steve thing because that's not, that should be what's important. What should be important is what's best for the rec department itself. And I, I am of the opinion that Steve and I could do a lot more with the rec department together than either one of us could do apart. I think we have, I think we have skill sets that complement each other well. And so I would, I would suggest that you at least consider a, some type of, some type of coercion between us. That, that's my stance on it. Now, I do think that there's a, I think that there's a lot that needs to be done. I think that the bathrooms are still the same bathrooms that were there when I played here 20 years ago. The fences, the bleachers. I think you just about could throw a rock in a random direction in the park and hit something that needs to be fixed. So I think there's a lot that needs to be done. And I think that if, if we want a rec department that the town can be proud of and that the kids want to come be a part of, then it's going to take more resources, including people. And that's, that's my stance on it. I know that nothing comes easy and nothing's free in today's world. And that it's going to take time and effort and energy and hard work to get it where it needs to be. And I don't know that one person can do it the way that it needs to be done, if we're going to be honest about everything.
Do you have a, do you have a plan? Do you have a direction you'd like to see us go?
Well, yeah, so my, the, where I would like to see it go is I would like to see all the fences and the, all the fences and the dugouts taken down. And I think we should rezone those two oversized fields into three smaller fields with home play facing towards the concession stand, which needs some love. But that puts everybody right next to all the food and stuff. People aren't walking three miles. We don't have to do the tent fences anymore that we had to go out there every day and put back up. Um, we can, the dugouts and stuff already need to be redone, the block ones, because that's not allowed anymore. You're supposed to have fence where everybody can see their kids when they're inside. And, and that's just baseball. We, we also have got to do something else after it. Baseball is not enough. Baseball's over and all, all our kids are sitting in the AC, playing video games, not doing any of that. So we, like, baseball, baseball is just the beginning. That's the beginning of the year, and that's the beginning of the activities for the kids. But I don't think overall that we're doing enough. I just don't, I don't think we're doing enough. I think we need, you know, flag football during the summer and Steve soccer program in the fall. And basketball, if we get it inside the builder note there. And there's, I know that we're a small town, and we don't have a school the way these other towns that we play against. And we have limited resources because we don't have a Walmart and whatever. Right, I get it, I understand, I grew up here. But I grew up here with a lot less than I would like my kids to grow up here with. You know what I mean? So that's, that's my stance on it. I don't know, I don't know how to give you my opinion without being direct and honest with you, and that's just it. So I, that's my stance on it. There's about a million things that need to be done and nowhere near enough time, money, or people to do it. So I feel like if you've got people that are here that are trying to, trying to help you move forward, then, you know, maybe, maybe modifications need to be made to, to help that.
What kind of budget do we have on, is this a parks? What kind of budget do we have on, is, is the parks, is the recreation department? It contributes as much, is it, is it almost self-sustaining or?
It's all, yes, that's the same. We'll transfer, you know, six to eight thousand dollars to you during the tour.
Anybody else have a question for, or, Mr. Kramer?
I have one more thing before you go forward. I was going to say, after all that, my whole little rant there, um, I want to say that I enjoyed this spring. I thought we had, I thought we had a good time out here. I appreciate you guys having faith in me to get it done. And, um, you know, I know you guys have Wausau's best interests at heart. And either way, whatever, whatever you guys think best or whatever you decide to do, we will be here to help make it happen.
Thank you, thank you. And I, and I, again, I think we've discussed this at our important workshop. I've not heard anything, I've not had anything negative about Brandon's service the whole season. I don't know if any of you have, I've not heard anything negative. Thank you and thank you for your service. Steve?
How are we doing?
Fine, how are you?
I'm doing well.
As, as though we didn't know, tell us, tell us, are you the mayor?
Brandon is correct. We do need all this. And up until this year, we didn't have the resources for the funding. We have the funding now. Uh, when I, when I stepped away, we were working on the football and soccer field on top of the hill at Roger's Park. We went back, back up, down. We have another grant to put a, we can't do three fields in the big one, so we only do two. And we're going to do T-ball and younger, nine years younger, we can put them offset with each other. Instead of doing temporary fences, we do permanent fences and we can play T-ball back in the corner and then keep playing ball. The other field needs rock, needs rocks taken out and everything. But I've done everything I could the last four years of trying to get funding to keep us where we're at. But we got them two grants. We, y'all voted on right before the end of the year to, uh, put them in the bank and get the banks. We have the money now to start all this. Um, me and, uh, me and Mark talked about the dugouts here. We want to tone them down last year because there's, was no money there to rebuild them. Um, the self-destain, yeah, we're self-destain, but we're self-destain not being able to charge kids to come in. Wausau gives us that bank because we don't have a school. The way my, the way the maps are drawn out is that we have the biggest map in Washington County. We go from Clayton Road all the way to, um, Greenhead, the county line to Jackson Bay County, up to Bonnet Pond Road. But we have no school here, so kids are able to go to Vernon or able to go to Chipley, wherever they go to school to. So we have to attract it by doing donations and not charging. Because a lot of people, six, seven kids can't afford to pay football, eighty-five dollars for a kid. Or the tri-county will help you, but it's only one time a year. They'll let everybody in Washington County one time a year. Um, I want to come back in here and go back, start on the football and soccer field. Start on, create our place following, uh, 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 baseball and softball fields for next year. There's a lot, I'm not going to come in here and just, okay, I'm back. There's things I left that hasn't been touched since I left. There's like, there's projects that need to be done that wasn't touched in this whole season. And yeah, I understand I stepped away and it's for personal reasons and I should, you know, I feel like I lived town down. But I'm at a point in my life where I can come back now. If you choose Brandon, Brandon's a good guy. That's a hundred percent. If y'all want, you both come in here and start. The only thing I ask for is Brandon to step away from Vernon and bring that here to Wausau. Because Vernon don't have Wausau's best interests in hand. You know, if you want the football program, football's been over here in Wausau this year, not over at Vernon. But Brandon did a good, I appreciate it, and I thank him a hundred times for what he did. I'm proud he stepped up for these kids. I haven't heard anything bad about Brandon. I've always supported him all the way through. Parents called me, I said, you're going to get in, Brandon knows what he's doing, Manny knows what he's doing. If you want to know something, go to him. You know, she, that's the backbone. But I'm not going to sit here and backseat the way. I'm going to go back to doing what I was doing and trying to advance all year, kind of proof thing. And I would like Brandon's help, but if you choose Brandon, I'll help him. But it's at y'all's mercy, you know, you've got two good people here. You got Brandon, you got Manny. Brandon probably got more time to give, but I do everything I can to give. But far as what I'm going to bring, I'm going to come back doing the same thing I'm doing and move this town forward. Yeah, we want soccer. First thing I'm going to do is implement soccer. So if y'all hire me back, we'll set you up first, we're going to start taking soccer applications. I borrowed them from Chipley, we're going to do the same thing we did last year. We're going to merge with Chipley on soccer, so these kids here could play soccer. We had three teams, no, two teams last year, but we merged one team and spread them out because Chipley wanted to do six to nine and then ten to twelve, ten to thirteen. But we'll go right into soccer. Play football, I'm all for football, that's baseball. I mean, I thought they were, you know, the Dolphins was going to bring that to us, Wausau, but they took it to Vernon. I mean, everything that cannot do on that. You ever wanted to take five, y'all run the same. You know, I give them a hundred percent on that. But I'm going to, I'm going to tell you something, we all need to come together, no matter what. Because it takes a village to raise a baby. And that's the same way with our kids with this, with this Wausau ground. But whatever y'all decide, I'm behind y'all a hundred percent. I mean.
I believe that would look for a different proof than that one.
Well, how do y'all, how do y'all feel about splitting the money?
Well, I don't care about the money.
Well, I know you don't.
Kids split the coat, you got to have somebody in charge.
Well, how would you feel about one being part of the other, Brandon or, or, uh?
Well, I'm not going to stand in the way, I'm not going to stand in the way to, to move forward. You can't split it, child. You got to have some, can't, if five of y'all can do it. When I was in that position, y'all were my boss. When these, uh, when you're, when you're trying, when you're trying to get all the coaches and all the players and all the umpires and everything, it takes a lot. But when you have to agree with somebody, say, I understand where he's coming from, but in this position, I've been here for four years. You can't split it. You got to have somebody who has the bottom say. You got these parents coming up, you'll have one, oh, don't worry about it, we'll take care of it. You got one saying this right here, you got totally confusion, you got total chaos.
I understand, I understand.
I mean, I, I mean, I, seriously, I mean.
He didn't, he didn't say how to split, and he didn't say not have one who would be director, one would be a helper. So, so some of that, uh, some of that might be working around, I, I'm not sure. Timmy, uh, and I may be way, way off. But when you first came here four, five years ago, one of the things that we asked about was men's league softball, women's league softball.
And I tried to do that.
And, uh, well, I'm not aware of it.
Well, we have tried, you can ask Michael Owens and all that. We tried, but we couldn't get, we got a men's flag football. That lasted a couple of months, we had a few teams, but couldn't get everybody to agree on everything. But, uh, we did try softball, but we can only get seven or eight people. I know that you would have been up there. But we have thrown it around and have thrown away, because there's a church that comes up there and plays almost every other Sunday. I don't know if you're aware of that or not, but there's, there's churches that come up there and actually play on Sunday after church.
After, on Sunday afternoon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got that.
Uh, they've been playing on that big field.
We used to do that.
Yeah, that's what we used to do.
Yeah, they, they go up there and, uh, I don't know which churches it is, because it's usually about twenty-seven people. That, uh, show, show up and then they'll split out with each other, play against each other. And, uh, that's when I started leaving the bags out there. But, uh, whatever y'all decide, I'm, I'm behind. Uh, bar is splitting the coat. I'll, I'll, with all my cases, if that's what y'all want to do, just let Brandon have it. Because I've been in those situations, it ain't going to work. You got to have somebody in charge, and you got to have people behind it. Now, me and my wife, four years, everyone of these fundraisers except for one yard self, we never had any help. Every one of y'all contesting, y'all come up there, tear up. Me and my wife was there doing everything. None of these people, none of these people came to help. That car wash I seen, which y'all told me that I would never have a car wash because of liability, which I thought was kind of strange y'all allowed that car wash, but they came together over there. And Brandon's the person, if kids these parents come together, then he needs to be in the positions of the director. If he can draw it. I just, if he gets it, I like to see him withdraw from Vernon and bring it here to Wausau and not be split, and we're making Vernon don't have our best interest. So you have never showed the best interest?
You lose, you lose them, and what, what hit are you talking about?
Football. See, he's coaching football at Vernon right now. Instead of bringing it here to Wausau, like we've been trying with the Dolphins and everything, they took it to Vernon.
Okay, let's, let's quick refer to it as Ian now. Okay, so we've got football. Do we have football coach, Vernon wants football?
Do what then?
You said Brandon took it there, and Brandon took it away.
No, no, we used, we used to have Washington Dolphins. And then Kevin and Brandon left us and took it over to Vernon.
Was it Lakers?
It was a nonprofit, but we had an agreement that we would do it here at Wausau. And they decided to go to Vernon because Vernon had a football field and they couldn't, they were getting kicked out of football, the league, because they couldn't get a team up. But that's neither, it doesn't matter, that's Vernon.
Yeah.
I just want to see if you got a director, I want to see him off here.
I'm just speaking for me.
Right.
That, that, if the kids can play, at this football field in Vernon, then play down there. That's not costing them anything. And it's not, it's not our kids, it's, it's not Wausau kids. Most of the kids are going to be from somewhere else anyway. I'm interested in us being able to back Wausau and, and the surrounding area.
Yeah, I saw what you said.
Well, and, well, but it's talking about like, it's like, uh, that, that is, that is a commodity or something, we giving it away or something like that. If they would go coach football in Vernon, that'd go. And whether them youngins goes with them or not, that's not his, that's not his.
Well, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if you give him the job, I would like to see it come to Wausau. That's what we're building up there at Roger's Park right now, is a football and soccer. So we can have football and soccer here.
Y'all know sometime I'm just slow.
But that's what I'm saying. If you give him the job, I would like to see it come back here. So our kids in Wausau, Sunny Hills and everything, will have somewhere to go where they can get in.
So we give him, we give him the job, so he makes those kids come over and play football.
Well, no, he don't make nobody.
That's my point. Them youngins didn't.
Wausau needs the program.
We, we might need a program.
We got a fifty thousand dollar grant now to build the field.
We might need a program, and he may can start a program, but it, but it ain't a matter of, it ain't a matter of it being a commodity in the basket. We take it over there and we bring it back.
Not going to play it. I'm saying if you do give them the job, that's what I would like to see. I didn't say anything bad about him going over there. I just said I want you to see football in Wausau. That, it, it doesn't matter if he goes over or not, that's his priority. But if he's going to be the director of Wausau, he needs to bring all that to Wausau and not go somewhere else and coach for them.
He needs to make it vote.
Correct.
You, you say bring, bring it back, bring it back, that's not to go over and arm up these folks?
No, my words might be different.
Bring back his coach.
Bring back his coach.
Well, not, yeah.
Instead of him going to Vernon to coach, bring him back to Wausau.
I understand that. And, and, and I would expect that too. I don't, I wouldn't expect, uh, Tim and Dennis to be down fixing leaks in Vernon, who they call that for Wausau. I wouldn't expect either one of you to be coaching in Chipley or Cottondale or Vernon or anyplace else. You bring your, your talents and your expertise here, and then whether or not parents bring their children or not, that's up to the thing.
Well, that, believe me, that's trying to get some of these parents to bring their kids.
Again, being you're the old timers now, uh, but the three of you have got a couple of years now. How many parents have we ever had at a city council meeting and said, I want you to bring this sport, this sport, this sport, or anything else? None. So, so some of what we're doing is we're creating our own little.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
Little kingdom, our own little work.
You were asking what I was going to bring, I told you what I was going to bring. I told you if you didn't pick me, this is what I would like to see. That's my opinion now. That's up to you. It takes three out of five y'all to do it for us.
Yeah.
I don't want to stand anybody's way, and I don't want them to step on toes. But this is what I will do when I get back. Soccer will come back, and I'll be working on the football and soccer field with, upgrade the, uh, the dugouts, the fences and everything, because we have the money to do that right now.
Brandon, have you been coaching at both places during the spring?
Yes, sir. So I, um, well, go all the way back. So the, the Washington County Dolphins, if we're going to, we're going to go back that far, was ran by Kevin Williams. I was the vice president, he was the president, okay? He, um, he, we coached the first season, the first two seasons, the COVID year kind of short, but we coached the first two seasons here. He, uh, going into the third season, he made a deal with Vernon because they didn't have, they didn't have enough kids to have a program, right? And really neither did we. The fact of the matter is, there's not enough tackle kids in this area to support two separate programs. There's not, plenty of baseball kids, plenty of basketball kids. Parents are scared of football nowadays. Full contact tackle football, parents are scared of it. There's not enough kids in our area that want to play tackle to support two programs. So they had half of a program over there, we had half of a program over here. Um, they already have a football field and they have equipment and they have a high school team, a middle school team, all this coaching staff in place. So, um, so Kevin made a deal with Tim, uh, that the Dolphins in Vernon would work together for, uh, for a football season. It was, um, it was my intention for us to host practices and flag in Vernon and in Wausau to keep both towns incorporated, because I, um, I personally think that the whole Wausau versus Vernon, like tribal, you know, you guys stay on that side, we'll stay on this side, is, it's kind of outdated and it doesn't do anything for the kids. And the kids is what this is all about, right? The kids is what I'm in it for, right? I'm not in this to make Wausau shine brighter than Vernon, I don't care about that, I care about the kids. I care about giving the kids something to do, and I care about what's best for the kids. So, um, so I go with the program to Vernon. And then, uh, this year, they asked me to come back and help. This year, um, Wausau was in flux. So, um, I had already agreed to and started coaching, uh, free camps on the weekends in Vernon before I ever took the director position here. Um, during the whole baseball season, I, um, I did all of my duties here during the week. And then on Saturdays, I went to Vernon and coached a football clinic. And then come one day, I came back over here. And, um, I don't think, I don't think anything was hurt by it. You guys didn't even know, it didn't affect anything as far as I'm concerned. And, uh, you know, the, the fact of the matter is that tackle football in itself, when these kids get into school, when they get into middle school and when they get into high school, they're going to be playing with Vernon. Most of them, Vernon or Chipley. And, uh, so what I, what I don't want is for us to make this a thing about pride and, I mean, Wausau versus Vernon, and we struggle with half programs in both towns for the next five years. And, you know, then when all our Wausau kids go to play football in Vernon, they're not welcome like the rest of the Vernon kids because we've been rivals for, you know, so long. And that's, I mean, I played baseball in Wausau growing up here, played against Vernon, hated Vernon. Did, that was the game that meant the most to me every year was us playing against Vernon, right? Well, then what happens when I get in middle school and go to play sports at Vernon? Okay, with all those kids that I have, you know, said some mean things to over the years. And, uh, you know, so then there's, there's animosity for day, from day one, and that's not, that's not what's best for the kids. It's not. So, I mean, I, I can understand how it could be, it could be misconstrued as a conflict of interest, right? But the fact of the matter is, is rec is about the kids. And I think if it's in the best interest of the kids, then who cares what side of the fifteen mile stretch I'm standing on?
Anybody have anything for Brandon? Or Steve? Um, if I understood you correctly, the Washington Dolphins or whatever, whatever the name was, was a, was an invention or?
It was a private nonprofit.
Okay.
That was.
It didn't belong to Wausau, so?
It did not, it did not belong to Wausau. It was a, it was the Washington County Dolphins. It was a private nonprofit. We did camps in Chipley, we did stuff in Vernon, we did stuff here in Wausau, we were Washington County.
So, so that, that entity, if it's an incorporation, that entity or that incorporation, something like that, was not ours in the first place in terms of some kind of ownership philosophy?
Correct.
So, so then, did, did you, did you entice, told, recruit, uh, anybody to leave here and go to Vernon? Now, Mr. Williams, I, I don't know if it's a plan that we have to deal with or something like that.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, he, he and the Dolphins are not involved anymore. They're not a football program anymore. The football program that I have been coaching with is the Vernon RAC department in their rebuild of their, of their football program to give kids in our area a tackle football option, because once the Dolphins folded, there hasn't been one. We have the, the middle school coaching staff is involved, the high school coaching staff is involved. We have been working really hard to build a football program. They're just as hard as I've been working here to build, uh, to, just as hard as I worked here during the spring to build a baseball program.
Okay.
So.
I think I'm getting to understand a little more.
Mm-hmm.
So Vernon's trying to have a football program. That does not preclude Wausau from having a football program.
No.
So both of you have a football. It ain't a matter of.
That's the plan.
It ain't a matter of bringing something back, it ain't a matter of starting a program of our own.
That's what we're trying to do, that's the reason why I'm trying to build a field.
Well, why didn't you say that to start?
See, that's, that's what I'm saying, though, is there's not enough tackle kids in the area to support two programs. That's why if Vernon did football and Wausau did soccer, which Vernon doesn't do, they run at the same time. Football and soccer happen at the same time. So if Wausau's gonna do soccer and Wausau's gonna do football, then they're gonna be happening against each other.
Well, you have, you have kids that play soccer that don't play football.
That's what I'm saying. So the kids that wanna play football can, you know, drop right down the road and play football where there's already, you know, a football culture established. And we've got a year of soccer here, so kids that don't wanna play football and think soccer's safer can come play soccer over here, and. Obviously, obviously, how many bodies loses with that?
We're trying in this big area that you talked about, Clayton to the.
Oh, that's our mountain, baseball and soccer.
We're trying. So of all the people that, that you've coached, and all the sports that you coached, and the things that you did this year, how many of them live in Wausau?
How many of them live in Wausau? Any part of any actual city limits of Wausau?
Exactly. So our first, our first obligation is to the jurisdiction of town Wausau.
You got that many kids.
These people, all these people around here, like, yeah, they, they, they're not the ones that voted for us to come and do business with Wausau first. So, uh.
I think you may have seven kids that live in Wausau.
I don't, I'm driving through the other day, and I was, and I, and I just, I couldn't, I couldn't think of a house. Maybe one, I couldn't, I, I can't even think of a house right now, but I know that there's children that live in Wausau.
Well, you got the trailer on the corner there, behind the football, the baseball, what's her name? The girl? The husband worked with you, is what it is.
They moved out, Karen.
Oh, they moved out, or he moved out?
Yeah. I guess Ms. Reitenberg, she and Kelsey have, have children.
Yeah, but they don't play anymore.
Okay. Chime in, Council, we need to determine several things. One of them is, uh, do we need a program? And I think that one probably is, is obvious. Uh, and if we do what we need that program to be. I think, Steve, you and I have had this conversation several times, so I don't think I'm going to kick you by surprise. If I do, I apologize and say not now. But, uh, one of the things that, that I think that when you were being our director was that, uh, and I know you think you did, I just don't think you did, was communicate with us. You had things planned, you had things going on, you had, you had here already before.
In the first, in the first year, yes. For the last three years, I came to this council for everybody even fundraising.
You brought.
Y'all brought everything.
You brought, you brought a, you brought a calendar to us a lot of times, but you already had to think.
No, no, that was for the dead days of the game. If I had a fundraiser, I come to this council before, you can ask this Marv. I had to get y'all's approval before I did it. Every single fundraiser, I had to get it. Ms. Reitenberg made a rule, a law, back when she was set on the council, that the RAC department could not have one fundraiser unless that board right there agrees thirty-five. So every single, you go back to the minutes, I have come to this council, every single fundraiser I had, y'all first. Even awesome day, even what the, the tickets have had yet, everything was approved by y'all. Now, you can sit there and say you don't remember, that's your God given right. But I did. Ms. Reitenberg made it a rule, I stuck to it. There was no fundraiser was done without y'all's permission at all. The games and everything, that was, Chip made the games and the nights. Yeah, that was made through without y'all, because that's the way that.
I was not, I was not addressing fundraisers so much, I, that was, that was, uh, and we can talk about it.
Right.
Okay, we have two people who have served the town very admirably. They have done both a good job in their careers here, and one of them wants to continue. Uh, I think we're talking about that we, that one can't do it. Uh, I would just caution whichever one of you is chosen tonight, that we not expand beyond our ability to, to manage.
Right.
Uh, parents, parents being involved, or, uh, you're gonna have to have coaches, you're gonna have to have lots of things that you have to have better than I do. And I just caution us that we grow at a manag, in a manageable rate. What is the pleasure of the council? Do we choose, or do we re-advertise, or do we go?
I think we'll choose tonight.
Choose tonight. I think we ought to.
I mean, we need to get underway, do the football field.
Yep.
Soccer field.
So what is the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion, look, Steve.
We have a motion for Mr. Hall, Mark, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hey, Bo, is Wes?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Chair, Bo, she is, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Carter, yeah.
But I, I would like to say, I, I, you know, y'all did great, Brandon.
Yep.
And then we sure appreciate y'all, I wish you're, I do, and I know the rest of us do too.
It's my pleasure.
You know, it's my pleasure that y'all was down there, and y'all was there all the time, you know?
And we do hope you'll continue to be with the eight with us.
Yeah, I know.
I still wanna work with them. I mean, I love them to death, I mean, both of them, even the kids.
Yeah, that's good.
So from here, we have to do the drug test and all that stuff again. Uh, and so we need to set a start date, uh, Brandon, for, uh, Steve.
July one.
July one, can we get all the, everything done? July first, we are the start date.
I can go take the drug test tomorrow.
Sir?
I can go take the drug test Monday or Tuesday. We're leaving, we're leaving out of town Tuesday. We're involved in the world, we'll be back Sunday, so I can take it tomorrow, Monday, or Tuesday morning.
I see, yeah.
All right. Okay. Anything else that relates to that portion of the agenda? Brandon, again, thank you. So moving forward. Okay. All right, moving forward.
Code enforcement. Washington County's code enforcement office quit. So there's no update on our property sent to the county yet, but they're acting for nothing, so maybe. Mr. Mathis said that he has still got our best interest at heart. Tobacco update. The tobacco that was, we got is not the one we needed. Uh, we, we have one in your package that's sixty-seven thousand dollars. We cannot get these people to talk to us. We are reaching out, we cannot afford the hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar machine. You know, we just wanted to make it a little bit, you know? We can't afford a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar machine. But that, like I say, Thompson Cat is still looking. I have reached out to Ring Power, but apparently we're in Thompson territory. So would y'all like me to reach out to some John Deere, who's our John Deere dealer in this area? Our Kabota dealer in this area?
Absolutely.
We need a used machine, but we don't need a gold machine.
I don't care if it's green or yellow.
I don't need a mine.
Green or yellow.
Steve's got the.
Well, I went to town all day, America, see, I know where America's at.
I seen that sitting there.
They just put it there, uh, yesterday. I meant to stop, but I got so busy. They got a backhoe, so they're not here for sale.
I'll call them money and see what that is. It looks about like ours, so we'll get back for a good amount.
Well, we know it's broken in from America's.
I've cautioned, uh, Tim, that if he looks, or even more, if he looks, we don't need, we need to get what we need.
Yes.
I've always had the feeling if I gotta get a buy, I just keep on getting buy. Like, if I can't get, I can't prove myself or get what I need or want, uh, I, I don't think we need to look, be looking for a get buy, if we need to get it.
We got two.
We can't trade our tractor, and we just don't need to do that, you know?
The, the John Deere.
Yeah. The Kabota needs to go somewhere.
And the other, the other one is not necessarily ours.
It's not necessarily ours.
Can either, can, can the, is the, is the big one this, could, can it be brought up to, to a reasonable standard? I mean, if I can fix that one for fifty thousand dollars, or buy this one for sixty-five or seventy thousand dollars, I just must have fixed the one that a God give it, it will work.
They say we might can fix that backhoe for about thirty thousand dollars, you know, and perfect. But they won't guarantee the cost of what's broken, Matt's changed, he's made it through the whole system, it's what one of them worked on.
They can't flush the system.
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I will talk to them again about that. I'll get a mechanic to come out and look at it, you know?
Yeah.
And come to see us.
It, it can't last forever, right? Of course, we'd have to have, we'd have to cooperate with the county then to get them to transfer to us, to fix it, or. We've got to do, we'd have to do something to make sure that that was all in order, but. I'm pretty disappointed in them sending us all this stuff that was exactly what we needed, maybe in the range that we could work the board, and then when they delivered it, they delivered it all together in different machine, didn't even, went in the same machine, and we had to, had to propose. Okay, anything else on the backhoe, on the equipment? Okay. Order.
Uh, we should have some fire room reports in here, but I don't see any, I don't know what.
I didn't have any.
Ms. Robin, but I do have those, but those are just for information for tonight. We, uh, we had called out, we had been on several scenes, but what Washington County's concerned is, is we're not doing the reporting necessary to, that they're requiring to in the system. You know, we get dispatched out, we do respond, but we can't, they can't tell us how many people responding to any fire or anything else, because they don't know they're not being reported. And I talked with Adam, Adam said most of them are just trees, but I told him, I said, Adam, if, it doesn't matter, if we dispatched out and we're supposed to do a report, we need to be doing a report. So he has went out and met with Savannah and the new, uh, fire coordinator, and, uh, and discussed with them on training, one of the office staff here to do the recording, and they go back to paper reports and just turn them in, and our draw, and we'll make the, the report in the system the next day. Now, they're trained, they're, they only have two people in the whole department that's trained on it. And I don't know if we're going backwards or forwards there, you know, but.
Trained on writing that report?
Trained on submitting it in the system, the network system.
I think you're going backwards.
I do too, but, you know, what can we do? We got the, we got to have our funding, and we got to be able to get those reports to them. But I did tell the chief and the assistant chief that the workshop in August, the council expected a turnout for our department to be here to discuss what the future is going to be for our department.
We fixed another million dollar building.
Yeah.
Over here, and. Well, these, these reports, they've been required for years. The Safer's requires, maybe some other acronym, I think it starts with an I.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah. And they've been, they've been, these reports have been required for years and years, and, uh, one, one day somebody will come over to the county, and the county will come to us and say, well, that may be easier running a department with, we just don't know. We'll lose our funding if we're not careful.
Yeah, we've got to get a hold of the, uh, handle on doing what's supposed to be done to satisfy Washington County, to keep our, and to satisfy, y'all, y'all have asked for reports for years and haven't got them in the last two years. We, we're not even, we're not getting any minutes, we're not getting anything else that's coming, that needs to come to y'all for y'all's review.
When I'm at, when I ask you about it, I've told you can't fire volunteer. They don't do that. A truck, a bunker gear, all that stuff, that's for. And family volunteer, they go to volunteer with Steve, they can have to be in the fire department, but. I hate to see our fire department being disassembled all the time. But when you go out, when you go out and run, that run is not complete. When you get back, that run is not complete. Sit down and fill out your paperwork. That's, that's what you need to do.
And they have a laptop. So if you get back from the fire, you go out of the trash fire, so you should get back and you need to fill out that report before you go home.
Yeah, because tomorrow, when you start to have a lot of heat, I think he was here, or.
I don't know, I was too busy.
They have a laptop that y'all provided in the truck for them.
And the truck, yep.
Okay, but as for review.
I think this Marvin, our next workshop, I think we need to have somebody here. Okay?
Okay, you have an interlocal agreement on floodplain management with Washington County. Uh, this is just standard, they're asking us to, to do, they manage our floodplain, and we just need to adopt this interlocal agreement.
That's, uh, enforce that.
Uh, planning department.
Planning department.
It's January.
What's the one with the plan? Well, that's the, uh.
Land balance is, uh.
Yeah, I'm talking about, that's the, uh. Well, this is floodplain management, that's what we figured about, but they had to fill this, had to get real perfect.
Right, oh, yeah. And we have to pay you virus for us, and they have a, we haven't dated our ones back in seventeen, they didn't update this interlocal agreement, so the state's breaking on Washington County right now.
Okay, what's the pleasure of council? For the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement? The county will continue to enforce our floodplain, and they will pay themselves by all the fees they collect. It doesn't cost us anything. What's the pleasure?
I'll make a motion, we say, a resolution.
Have a motion, is it a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Hey, Bo, is Carter?
Yes.
Is Wes?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Chair, Bo, she is.
Okay, the only other thing else I have is the interprovision for both Dallas and Logan to go to film a deployment.
Okay?
Can we do that, or a motion?
Yes, sir, we can.
I'll make a motion, we end their probation here for two permanent, four.
For what?
Both of them.
Motion is our second.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? My discussion, and it, it may be separate from this, if you, if you think of these, then we'll back it up and do it again. Uh, it's a, it's a tennis. I was going to ask for a tennis fricker tonight, but, uh, I forgot to mention that in the water.
I'll take that part.
I never told you I'm gonna come, but, uh, uh, this relates to our, because of work, we either need to or we don't. And when both officers, there's not anything to do, it's weeds, half of the height of winter out there, it needs to be moved, we need it or something. It's weeds, half of, highs in winter out there, it needs to be moved, we need it or something.
I always go with it, send it.
I miss Wes, he's got a seven...
Yeah.
But, but, uh, we...
So we having problems with an employee not showing?
Well, they sometimes don't call in to let me know that they're allowed. If they got time, they're allowed to use it, but they're supposed to notify me, you know, if they're sick. And Tim does, you know, he does. And I guess Dallas may notify Tim sometimes, but he doesn't, I mean. And I can't do payroll with time, you know, without being notified, or assaulted or something.
Well, if somebody needs to just talk to Dad.
Dad, that man, that Tim leaves speed.
Tim leaves speed?
Yeah.
And, and I'm going to tell him, if you, if you got two, if you got two man shop, two woman shop, two person shop, I don't know, both of them, you know, at the same time. I mean, we, sure they can take their leave, but I bet, I bet, I bet they don't let fifteen of them walk in the county yard the same day. So we might need to, that would be a policy thing, though, because they do have a policy they're working on. We'd make, we'd need to, we get into business at times, I guess, we might need to do that with policy, but we, we hired them because we, I still think we got penny for two to two. I think we got penny for them inmates, if they ever get here. Okay, we have...
How many days have they been off? How many days has Dallas been off, and how many days is Tim?
I have to give that for it.
Is it a lot?
No, it's not a lot, probably, uh, I think Dallas is, you know, in six months, he'd accumulated forty-eight hours of leave time on sick leave. Because you cannot take your own leave by your own probation. But he's probably got a couple hours left on his sick leave. He's been about a week off, all together, you know?
She hit me yesterday, you were...
But, you know, but they're both doing really good, you know, loving him, Dallas, both are doing. And I asked Dallas the other day, because he, and he, he is, you know, older, and he does have a problem with the heat and the wetting and all that, you know? And I asked him the other day, I said, Dallas, do you still want to continue the forty hours a week, you know? If he's going to come off probation, it's the time to say yes or no. And I'll present it to him, and he said he wanted to stay the forty hours, you know?
And I think if we can get the inmates, that's good. But if we don't really get inmates, this is costing, this is costing us now.
Well, payroll is about nineteen hundred dollars a week. So, you know, that's big, big time on a small town, a small budget, very much good time.
Okay, we have a motion is second. Any other discussion on the motion? Both, both employees to come up with a, a temporary, be transferred, transitioned to full time, is that your motion?
Yes.
And her second?
Okay.
And your second, right? How you voting, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Or, yes, Ms. Wiz?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's all I got. Can we have Mr. Cliff, though? We want to...
Oh. I thought I saw Cliff's name somewhere.
He's in here, he was up here all night.
I thought I heard somebody speak his name in vain.
I almost ran out of here when I heard him say tennis.
Oh, and, what's Tim, come to me, one last, one last...
Right up here. You're not gonna like it, but you know how to...
Talk to us, Mr. Nowitzki. Welcome, welcome back to Washington.
Yeah. I'm only, I only get sick when the Gulf of Mexico is really flat.
Yeah.
So, uh, if I could, just take a couple minutes to get you guys caught up on our Possum Palace project, and let you know where we're at, what we're doing. We're with Robbie Hall, and did a walk through of all the work that he's done so far, through the bathrooms and the building and so forth. And so, believe it or not, the Possum Palace was a little bit ahead of its time. So in nineteen seventy-six, I think it was, they permitted two separate septic tanks for six hundred people on each one. So six hundred on one side, six hundred on the other. And, you know, the septic tanks in the drain field are on the north end of the building. And so fortunately, they permitted it for that many people, because that's still the number of people that you would permit a new one for today there. And so, I don't know how, but they built a very large system in nineteen seventy-six. And my guess is they were probably going to have a lot more stalls than what actually got built, because what's actually in there, you could never fit twelve hundred people in one day through, so...
That's a long line.
Right, it would be a very long line. So, so now we're in position to, you know, to be able to get rid of the porta potties and have nice restaurants for everybody that comes. And so, the health department, in order to permit the existing tank and septic systems, we had to submit our development orders, our plans, all our stuff to them. They reviewed everything, and gave us the thumbs up after we had the septic system pumped out and checked. They gave us the thumbs up to use those existing tanks and those existing drain fields, which is a blessing, because that would have been very expensive. And so, uh, you know, we knew about where the tanks were. We knew that we had to run from where the new bathrooms are to the tanks, but we didn't know piping wise, you know, elevations, grades, all that stuff on the existing tanks. There's no way to really know until you did start digging them up. And so, um, so we have two options. Uh, we have option one, which is a little scary, which is to put a hole in the existing tech side of the existing tank to run the gravity from the bathroom into the tank, about nine inches lower than the hole that's there now is. Uh, is one option. Uh, we would have to permit that through the health department. Uh, and have to get approval from them to lower the, it's called the influent line on both the tanks. So, uh, you got the women's on the west side. It would run about a hundred and ten feet and tie into the tank. And then the men's would run a hundred and ten feet and tie into the tank. The contractor has that in his price right now to install that pipe. Uh, what we didn't know about is the elevations. And so, uh, with him running a four inch pipe, it need to be about somewhere around seven inches. It's a, there's an inch of fall now, it needs to be about seven inches lower than that where it goes into the tank. The unknown is, if we tell them to move forward with punching holes in those tanks, I'm afraid of what's going to happen to the tanks. I'm afraid if those tanks, you know, fall apart, collapse, whatever, we're going to have a much bigger problem than we would have if we put grinder pumps, with a grinder pump on each side. The grinder pump on each side would go into the exact same hole that's there now, and we wouldn't be messing with the tanks. Uh, they're made out of block, CMU block, that's gravity. It's not a solid port tank like they make now. Uh, back then, they allowed people to build a tank out of, out of CMU block, and then pour a slab in the bottom of it, and then pour a slab for the top, which is what's out there. And so, it's been there since nineteen seventy-six. Uh, so I don't know how many years that is, but it's a lot.
Forty-six, two.
Yeah. So, I was, um, I was, uh, you know, I was seven years old when I was built.
Carol was born.
I was born.
That's the first porch that got closed there. Yeah, it went out the door.
So, uh, so I'm nervous about directing the contractor to knock a hole in the wall of that lower than the hole is now, because I don't know what's going to happen. And so, we can gamble, and I can run it through the health department, and we can tell the contractor to go and see what happens. Uh, or we can put in a grinder pump on each side and send the forceman through to hold this there down. So the price for, I got a quote for the two grinder pumps, the control panel, uh, the pump station itself, everything we would need to have the contractor install them. We have a price for, which was ten thousand, uh, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. So, uh, there would be additional cost, which would be the contractor installing the two grinder pumps, which I don't think would be a tremendous cost. It takes probably, you know, a day a piece at the most. Uh, I haven't got a price back from them yet. I've told him we need a price from them, but, uh, I don't know what that cost is. I don't think it would be significant. So, so the question is, do you guys want to roll the dice and knock a hole in the wall and see what happens? Or do we want to put in grinder pumps? I don't know the answer.
I think we need to rule that. When you, when you talk about grinder, that, that, like a lift station?
Yeah, it's a small...
It's only have it in the firehouse over there.
Yeah, it's a small little lift station. It's a, it's a fiberglass can, two foot diameter fiberglass can, that's six foot tall. But they dig a hole, and they bury that in the ground, and the top is level with the ground.
Yeah, that's what we just, I didn't, I don't, I won't remember that term. When we did it at our church, we didn't have bathrooms in the front of our church.
Right.
So after the hurricane took the front of our church off, instead of putting the pastor's off, I would put bathrooms and things like that. But our, our septic tank is at the other end of the building, and on the other side of the building. We put something out there, and it goes around the building, and it's working great.
Yeah, I think we did one across the street, too.
Did we save, did we save enough by not having to permit two new septic tanks to paper this?
Well, Ms. Margaret was...
Where are, I haven't heard back from Melissa yet. See how much we have left in the grant, so hopefully we will hear.
So, uh, so, you know, what we could probably do is try to gather enough information to come back to y'all's next meeting and decide what we want to do. Uh, I got with Johnny Evans, Johnny's been hauling some dirt out there the last few days. Uh, the contractor's got the handicap parking formed up. Probably will be pouring next week. Uh, so he's still got some sidewalks to do to tie in and connect and so forth, so... We've got a little bit of time, but I wanted to get it in front of you guys as soon as I've figured out what, you know, the best approach might be. I'm just worried about knocking the, the CMU block, because I don't know what's going to happen.
That's, that's my concern. Any tank can open, hoping in the wall, you weaken the structure.
And it's holding up.
Later, later, it may not, it may be a year, five years, it may never, but...
Yeah.
By not opening this wall, it's somewhere, sometime, it's going to leak.
Yeah. Well, if they, uh, if they grounded them solid and put steel in the cells, I would feel pretty good about it. But I don't know back then if they grounded them and put steel in it, or if they're hollow, or how they're grounded. Uh, it just makes me nervous.
That makes me feel like a grand thing.
But I, I don't want, I would hate to have to come back and say, you know, timeout, you know, we can't rebuild them because they don't allow these anymore. Um, we had a wall cave in, and now we got to get two tanks, which is probably going to cost more than this, I would guess. So anyways, my idea was, if there was money left in the grant, which Ms. Margaret's going to figure that out with Ms. Fox, just to verify dollars wise. And I probably have enough of the information myself to figure it out. I didn't have time to mess with it today, but, um...
We're going to pile here after that.
Yeah. So if there is, so if there is money left in the grant, I would suggest we try to do this instead of knocking a hole in the wall. Um, but I kind of wanted to talk to you guys about it and make you guys aware of the situation. Um, so that, so that you guys don't have any big surprises that come before you.
Do we know, and we'll know?
I'd Melissa be right with me by Monday.
So I'm mostly just trying to provide options for you guys right now.
Can we, can we wait until we're next meeting?
I think so. I think so.
Saying if you know, knowing it was urgently, we'd have to submit to the...
Or another option would be, if there is money in the grant, maybe you guys can vote to, you know, give us the ability to move forward with these.
Contingent on money in the grant.
Contingent on money being available. Um, that way, we wouldn't have to wait until the next meeting.
Yeah, because we're getting close to the beauty pageant for Fun Day, July twenty-third. I get, y'all promised it would be ready for Fun Day.
Yeah, well, if you look on here, the delivery date is one to two weeks. So they actually have them in stock. Uh, so it's not something we're going to have to worry about parts and pieces and all that kind of stuff. They actually have them in a warehouse. And so, that was the other thing I was worried about, was that, you know, if we did knock a hole and had a problem with the tank, how, you know, you got Possum Day coming up, I mean, it's around the corner. Uh, and so that was my other concern, was that if we did have a problem, now we have two brand new unbelievable bathrooms that we can't use for Possum Day, which that's going to make everybody look kind of silly.
And the latter.
And those, those septic tank permits, just for residential, just for a small one, is a couple thousand dollars or, or more. And the tank itself is like five thousand. What did, what did Mr. Odom fill us, Nancy? What, what did Navy Odom fill us the septic?
I can't hear you.
Navy Odom set up the septic tank as what? About five thousand dollars?
For us? The twenty-three and thirty-five hundred?
It was thirty-five hundred for me, about, right?
Thirty-five, so, okay.
That's, that's for a thousand gallon tank, if you're three times that size.
Yeah, so, so that if we had to go, if we did something that made us have to go with you, if we want to be greater across than this, by the time we permit it in...
That's my guess. Uh, and, you know, there may be a way to convince the health department to, you know, let us build back what was there somehow, but I don't know. I kind of feel like, I kind of feel like, you know, knocking a hole in that block is probably a bad idea, that's just what I feel, and I could be wrong.
It's what the contractor thinks, too.
All right, we've heard, we've heard Mr. Nowitzki, uh, good news. Do we want to just let Margaret get the information for us in terms of money and things like that come to our next meeting? Or do we, uh, first of all, I guess we need to decide which, which, uh, which solution we need to fix, which, uh, comes in the doctor's call.
I think what he's asking for is to go forward with the grinder pumps, contingent upon money's being available in the grant.
Yeah.
And then we'll root back if it's not.
If they're not, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna roll the dice.
Okay, what do, what do we think?
I say give it to grinders. And then, and there's enough, yeah, if there's enough money in there, do we have to meet back?
I think, I think what he's saying, if we did it contentious upon money, we would not have to meet back if there's not money. We have to meet one day or another, but... Is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
We got a motion that we continue to research the grant, and if we have money in the grant to install the grinder pumps, rather than knocking a hole in the existing tanks, is our second to that motion.
I say...
A motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? How you doing, Ms. Wiz?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Sure book she is.
Thank you, guys. And, uh, you know, the project's pretty much done. The handicap parking and the sidewalk tying to it. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do the road relocation, a lot of the other parking. We had drainage improvements, I mean, we had, you know, a lot of stuff lined up for out there that can be future phases. But we just want to try to get this one buttoned up and done and ready for everything you guys have coming up.
And we get it done, we can apply again for the second phase in September. And thank you, Mr. Fred Sash.
Yeah. And I, you know, I think it certainly would look good on the city that we're done with it. Hey, here's pictures of what we just did. We want to move forward with what we already have planned, and you guys have already paid for that stuff. So it's not, you don't have to pay anybody again, and we already got it sitting on the shelf ready to go, so...
While Mr. Nowitzki was here, I, I felt mentioned at the last meeting. I had talked with him about, oh, we started doing Jefferson Street. That's one of our future sculpt routes or something. But, but I asked him, when he started looking at that, to look at where, where Jefferson Street goes down and turns into our, to our rec center and ball field, something like that. Could we not open that up and, and tie it into Forest Avenue? We're loo, we're losing, we're, uh, from turning like that, we're losing the space between the ball field and the tennis courts and basketball court. And it also drives us right into our, uh, ball fields and things like that. Maybe we could just open that street up from Forest, First, Sixth Street, wherever that is, all the way through to Forest Avenue, if there's any benefit to that.
Yeah, and, uh, I'm quite familiar with it, because I tried to cut through that way a few days ago, and there, there's no way you're getting across right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of course. It's not, and it may not be, I was thinking about that when, when, uh... Now we know that seven seven will move that way, so we may not have a problem getting off of Forest over there for, for days, we may not have a problem there. But I was, I was thinking about, hit close off that little three hundred, two hundred feet of road in there that goes back out to seven seven. If we just use everything coming either on Buster Rogers and Dale, or come down this way. It will, it will take away an alley, though, we need to remember that, too. If we was to do that, it would take away an alley if we closed that.
Probably a lot safer for people leaving the events.
That's what I'm thinking.
Otherwise, you have a big, long line of cars, and everybody trying to get out at one time.
Pulling out and shit yourself.
Yeah.
They also got cars that come over to the thing and realize, oh, I can go all the way around here. So then you have to go back out and everything. So then they have to go back out and everything, they get lost a lot over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it can, it could certainly be done, we'd have to put a pipe in the culvert and there's a pretty good bit of drop in elevation from the top of the hill where, where it's at now, down to where the route is, but I think it's really doable.
Yeah. Anything else you're bored of?
No, that's it, uh, just, uh, appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys and, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll have a ribbon cutting hopefully pretty soon.
The second street, uh, we're advertising for proposals now, y'all will open, we will open that here at the town hall on the twenty-second, did I do that correctly? And y'all, our twentieth or something, when y'all meet next month, we'll let the engineering and the, uh, administration on Second Avenue and the well project.
All right, I think if you guys made copies of these, we'll do it.
I do.
Okay, you got them?
Thank you.
All right, cool. We appreciate it and, uh, I'll try to be, uh, in attendance at your next meeting.
Cliff.
Maybe on time.
Why, you know, can you walk up to and go in the firehouse and look at those doors?
Yeah.
They're rusting.
Are they?
Inside, the inside is rusting. The admin and faces some humidity from the bay, so those doors shouldn't rust, have they?
Yeah, there's a, you got a one-year warranty on everything in there.
Yeah, Pete, you know where Pete's at.
I do.
I see, do you have what you say? I'm about to go show me a man over there, if you will.
Maybe he'll, he'll, uh, he'll tell me where it's at about that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Cliff, good seeing you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone in the audience, we don't have anybody signed in? Okay, Mr. Carter, anything for the, for the order?
I don't have anything.
Don't have anything tonight? Ms. Walker?
No.
Carter?
No, I'm good.
Wiss, can we save one there for you?
I do.
Okay.
I've had, not only, well, I had seen it before, somebody approached me, um, because I usually go up there and I pass Mama and then scry even look at it. And I knew that they were going to take and put out the kill, the weed killer. But the thing is, when you put that out, all it's going to do is try to ground, it's going to leave it standing there. And it looks, to me, it looks bad. And I know that we don't have no inmates right now and I know it's hot out there, but it would look so much better if all of them weeded. I mean, we have weed eaters, we have pushmowers, we have zero turns, and it just needs to be weed eaten. I was approached by somebody about the fire department that it's cut over there, but it's not weed eaten around. All the, the holding ponds are not weed eaten around. All that's just, it's growing up so high, you can drive by and see the weeds out of the holding ponds. So, I mean, it's, it's being, uh, it's, it looks bad.
When I go to the cemetery and see the places where it was applied, I think we'd get a good application.
Yes, I've seen it on top of Mama's and...
Application, it would be narrow around Hoopin' and places like that.
I mean, it, it just turns, I mean, all it does is just turn it brown and leaves it standing, it's not, it's not making it look no better by not weeding that.
I believe Ms. Carter can probably fix a jar of water.
I can.
Have that. Okay, anybody else got anything else? I had, uh, one note left from the last meeting, uh, did we get a letter down to the garage and have heard a response from them?
No, we haven't got a response, and we have got a letter down to the garage, but we haven't not heard a response from them.
Anything else? Motion for adjourn? Second for adjourn? All right, go home.